All right, it's 6:05. Welcome to the Public Safety Committee. Today is September 1st. We don't have any minutes to approve, so we're gonna skip that. Is anyone here that wanna say something that is not part of the agenda? Now is the time to say whatever you want. That is not part of the agenda. The agenda today, we have the review of the license of of a 16 fuel storage permit for 35 and 40 on L Street. And we have the on-street parking and the traffic rules and orders. If anything else, you wanna say it's not part of the agenda, is now the time to speak. I guess no one. So, is anyone here for the representative of the new company asking for the permit?
I'm sorry, Omar, was that public speak that we just?
No, before there was a public speak time, that is not part of the agenda. If you wanna say something that is not part of the agenda, you can say it now if you want.
Okay.
But I'm gonna let the public to speak for the tanks. I'm gonna let you speak if you wanna talk about it.
Okay, I have another meeting to go to.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I speak really quickly? I'm sorry.
Just let me ask the other consultant.
Thank you.
Yes, Lindsay, do you have any question about this new project?
No.
No? Patty, yeah, what you wanna say?
I guess, you know, I'm here because I know that there's a lot of folks in our neighborhood, and I live in the neighborhood, that are concerned. And I think that we understand this is probably, you know, going to happen regardless. But it seems to me, after I reviewed, I had a back and forth with Jeff, the city planner, you know, when this whole project came to my attention. And I reviewed a lot of the back and forths between one of my neighbors and the fire department and some other things. And it just seems like some of his questions weren't answered. And, you know, this is, it sounds like a fairly large facility that definitely can have safety concerns. And we live close by, and I think it's, you know, where we've been, you know, in the number of years I've been in East Hampton, you know, we've been working on more, you know, to have more and more transparency. So people in our community feel like they have a stake in what's happening. And I feel like this was just sort of, you know, it was just by, you know, accident that I ran into Mike one day and he was talking about this. So I just feel like his questions weren't answered, and he had some really good questions. You know, some of them concerning the company itself and just the diligence that the town has done. And I'm not saying this isn't a good company, but I don't know because the questions haven't been answered. And I know that this committee can't sit here and answer these questions. I get how that works. But I do think, you know, some answers to some of these questions would be in the interest of having an open dialogue with the community that's really close by. And frankly, people are a little nervous. And I think this committee, Public Safety, needs to know that. And I guess that's what I have to say. I know.
Can you please tell us, just for the record, the address?
Patty, Dockerty, 82 Lovefield Street.
Thank you. Okay, those questions that you have and the other half, can you please ask the question now? Because we had Dan from the fire department, and probably Dan can answer a few of those questions. If not, we're gonna schedule another meeting because we moved the public hearing to October 7th at 6:15. So we have enough time to have this conversation. So now is the time to bring the questions. And if Dan cannot answer those, we can invite Jeff back to the next meeting and the company, so that way we can have all the questions answered by then.
Okay, well, one question I had, I was a little confused. And honestly, like, I don't know all the ins and outs. I wish I could study it completely. I was, I'm a little confused about what the oil tank is, so I'd like to know more about that. I did see that, I think I saw in the paperwork, that the conservation, I don't know what his title is, you know, thought that everything was okay. But certainly, you know, oil leaks are a concern. So that was one I had. And then I know, and I don't know if Michael is here. I don't know if that's Mike on the iPad there.
I am.
I think there was questions about the odor additive and how, you know, is that being used and how that, if that works? There was a question about the background of the company, just, you know, do we, have they, you know, do they currently operate in other towns nearby and whatever? Their financial health, which I think is a great question. Are they going to be viable to build and, you know, have, you know, to complete the project, I guess? Is there, you know, is there any contingency if the company is sold? How many rail-sized tanks are allowed? And how will new and obsolete tanks be secured? And I'm sure other folks might have other questions. But those are the ones that I know were some of the questions that I've heard from the other neighbors that had, you know, some of those concerns.
Thank you, Patty.
Those are out there.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I'll be sure to go back and watch the rest of this meeting. But I do have to run now, and I really appreciate Lindsay and Omar, you know, hearing the community on this. Yes, have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. Before let anyone else to speak, is, Dan, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, thank you. Can you please give us a summary about this project and how the fire department was involved with this?
So, sure. So, the company had approached us, and I'd been working with the, they had hired a consultant who was an expert in the propane industry. And they went through a fire safety analysis, that was the first thing. So I worked with them through the fire safety analysis, looking at the lot, looking at the water supply and the general area that it was put in. So we started with the conversations, you know, with that first. There's some preliminary things that have to be done and stuff. So I've been working back and forth with the consultant with that, you know, throughout the process in reviewing the fire safety plan. It clearly follows the state fire code and the NFA 58, which is a consensus standard that we follow also here in Massachusetts. So those two components all the way through, so everything was followed there. So that's kind of how we've been involved throughout there. Up and beyond what we required as being the AHJ, the Authority Having Jurisdiction, because of our staffing and such, we required that they pre-pipe a dilute, water dilute system. Basically, there are two large fixed water monitors that will cool the tanks. They will be pre-piped to the road, and all we have to do is hook in the road and feed those if there was a, some type of fire or something that occurred there. Like I had mentioned before, there are multiple safeguards that are built into the system, you know, as we do with everything else. We learn over time through issues that come up and stuff to make things safer. And so there's been multiple things put in there. The idea is when you have, if something happens in this fire on a propane tank, the strategy is to cool the tank, is to keep the tank cool. That's the big thing. And so we made sure that that was gonna be in the plan for this. So that's kind of where we've been at with it, or that, kind of summarize it.
Do you, do you know how many tanks they're planning to do that?
Yeah, so there will be three 30,000-gallon tanks. And then, and Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, there'll be a 1,000-gallon tank on the inside of the fence. That will be for people who want, you know, grill tanks filled, et cetera. So that will be separate, up towards the front with a separate pump that would fill grill tanks. And the land license also takes into account if they were to bring in other tanks, you know, they're planning to bring in tanks and then to be sold and stuff. So, but from what my understanding is, that they're not looking to store a lot of extra tanks there. But, you know, at times, there'll probably be tanks coming in, and then they'll be, you know, set up, and then they'll be moved to people's property and stuff. So any tanks from a grill tank to the big 30,000-gallon tanks, all that gallonage has to fall under that land license. So that's why, that's why the increase in the land license. There's already a land license there, there's an underground diesel tank there.
And that's down the ground is 10,000 gallons?
I believe it's 10,000, yeah, that's existing. So this is just adding more gallonage onto the, onto the land license to allow that storage of that. They'll also have what's called bobtails, those will be in and out, you know, those are the trucks that, you know, anywhere from 2,000, 3,000 gallons will be out in the delivery trucks that will be delivering propane there and stuff. So, Jody, was there anything else you wanted to kind of add to that as far as the storage there?
No, but the trucks aren't part of the land license. The land license, anything that has wheels falls under DOT. And anything that could be either filled with propane or moved and filled with propane to someone's home or business has to be included. So if there are temporary tanks, and there are proposed a few temporary tanks that could be moved to homes and businesses.
So, basically, the permit is to increase from 10,000 gallons to 30,000 or over 30,000? To storage, different kind of, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be a diesel tank, three propane storage tank, a methanol tank, five, 1,000 domestic tank, six, 500 domestic tank, 14, 120 domestic tank, and different kind of, right?
Yeah, that would be, that would be the total license. Everything, yes, the total license.
Okay, okay, that include the end with the 13, 25 domestic tank, right?
Yes.
That's the last one?
Yes.
Okay. Lindsay, do you have any question or concern?
Listening, thank you.
Okay, I'm still waiting for Salem, he's supposed to be here soon. I just wanna answer a few of the questions that the neighbors have before they start asking questions publicly. First, why you guys didn't have any notification about this project? It's because the ordinance that we have just notify people that is 300 feet or closer. If you're over 300 feet, the city also have to notify anyone. I agree, there's some situation we should, and probably we wanna work in something in the future with other companies or areas. But that is something that is not related to this. But I just wanna explain why the neighbors didn't receive a notification about this. That's the main reason. About if something happened before with this company, I don't know if it is the purview of this committee to ask. We always can ask if something happened before. I think it will be easy to find out too, just looking at the name of the company, and probably we'll get it. But I really trust the fire department and their air practice and what they're doing, especially Dan Constantino, that he is the fire, I forget about, what exactly were you doing?
The captain of fire prevention.
Fire prevention, exactly. So I really trust about what Dan Constantino is doing and the new fire chief. I don't remember the other question, but I will let you, the public, to ask any question. I'm really sad Jeff Bag is not here. I know it's another meeting. I'm gonna try to schedule the next meeting. The Jeff can participate and answer more questions. But I'm pretty sure the planning board have a meeting tonight, and that's why he's not here with us tonight.
Excuse me, just for the minutes, Jody.
Yes, can you please identify yourself so that we can put it on the record?
Jody Amadon. And I'm the consultant for Jeff Hunter Pioneer Fuels.
Okay, thank you.
I'd be happy to answer that question about odorant that.
Yeah, you can.
If you, I can, of the questions, the diesel was answered. And Jeff Hunter is on, if you'd like him to speak about his company after. But odorant, propane doesn't naturally have an odorant. It's added when it is either put into pipelines or when it's put into rail cars. There's a number of checks when a transport truck is loaded, when they test at the terminal, and it's a big part of the process. In fact, Massachusetts has the most stringent tests for odorants of all the states that I work in. But there is an odorant that is added, and there would be no un-odorized propane that would run through this facility.
Sorry, I'm taking notes.
That's okay.
I'm gonna open to the public, is any from the public that have any question or comment? Please identify yourself first, and then we'll let you be part of it. Anyone?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you please, your name and address?
Russell Wall at 13 Stanley Street.
Can you repeat that?
Russell Wall at 13 Stanley Street.
Okay. Yep.
Question for the fire department. If one of these tanks were to start with a fire, they would seem to use a water system to cool the tanks to keep them from, I guess, exploding. Is there a point where they burn off the propane that are in these tanks to diffuse the chance of an explosion? And if so, that fire that would be burning as they burned off the propane in those tanks, how long does that go on, and how much smoke and damage does that do to the surrounding area?
Okay, wait on, okay, I'll start with that. So, so what would happen if something were to, if there was a leak or something, and it was to catch fire? First of all, I wanna explain, I explained this at the planning board meeting, you know, just to, any misconceptions, it's not like a stick of dynamite where you light it and it's gonna blow up right away. What happens is, if a tank were to catch fire, if it's letting product out and it's caught fire, it's gonna heat, the tank's gonna heat up.
Right.
And it's gonna cause what's called a blebby, boiling liquid expanding vapor. And that's the danger. So the strategy is to keep the tank cool, is to keep the tank cool. So what's gonna happen is, if a fire erupts and stuff, there's gonna be relief valves that are gonna start to go off, very loud, the relief valves are gonna go off. And then the strategy would be to keep the tanks cool. And that would be, so it's not necessarily, sometimes, and it depends on the situation, to put the fire out, but to keep the tanks cool as the fire uses up the fuel and stuff and such. And sometimes that would be, that would be the strategy. And again, it depends on where the fire is, what type of fire it is, you know, if it's in the piping, or if it's actually coming out of the tank itself, et cetera.
Was that a burning off of the fuel that's in the tank?
Excuse me, sure, I just wanna put some rules, I'm sorry. Could you please ask all the questions so that way we can answer? So can you please, do your statement, your questions, all of them, so that way we can have a smooth conversation and answer instead of going back and forward between all the participants? You have any other question, sure?
So, I just wanted to, so, Jody, did you wanna add anything to that?
I, if I may, I'd like to explain, there's a number of safeties that are in the system that have to have failed for it to get to a fire. Prior to 2011, we did not have internal valves or what we call pneumatic systems. What pneumatic systems are, is they're a tiny line of plastic fusible links, usually charged with nitrogen, sometimes with oxygen, and it's connected to the internal valve. So when those, when those pipes are heated to 212 degrees, they melt. When they melt, they slam the internal shut, and that, that, basically, it does away with your source of fuel. Those have to have failed, the internals have to have failed, a lot of things have to go wrong. What we're planning is, we're planning the absolute worst case. But there's a number of other things that, and there's emergency shut-offs throughout the facility that anybody could use also to shut down the facility. So when we talk about a blebby, or we talk about the water systems that we're putting in, we're saying three, four, or five things have to have gone wrong. And that's how we have to design, is we have to design as if absolutely everything would go wrong. And then we have to plan to make it as safe for the fire department. That's why we're proposing the water cannons, is so that they can stage from behind the building where they have water until more hazmat help can get there, or expertise. We have emergency, we have emergency response trailers in the propane industry throughout New England. And the New England Propane Gas Association, which I'm part of, has a training program, which I've been talking to the fire department about also. So there's a lot of things that we're thinking about and keeping in mind as we're designing this, to make it as safe as possible.
Before, I wanna let, before, keep going, do you have any other question or comment? So that, or not, so that way I can let someone else from the public to make other questions?
No, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Pat?
Mike, you want, who's on?
Pat?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just wanna say.
Can you please identify yourself?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Patricia Barrows. I live on 1 Stanley Street, 1 Stanley.
What was that, Lindsay?
I got that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Pat.
So, thank you all for being at this, for me being able to be at this meeting. And I don't really, I come from a firefighting family, so they could probably talk about all of the technical aspects, so they'd have more technical questions. But I don't understand that much about the technology of it. And I understand that everybody's working in good faith and doing what, you know, what the current governance asks them to do. I think my main comment is more of a meta-comment. And I think you mentioned this in the introduction, that I understand that people within 300 feet of this, if there was anybody within 300 feet of this proposed location, other location, were the ones who were supposed to be notified. But I would ask, and maybe it's not your committee's place to do this, but I would ask as someone who's at 900 feet from the location, it just seems to me that common sense, that neighbors would be very concerned about this kind of, you know, even with all of the safety that's being incorporated into the project. I think any one of you, if it was very close to your house, you'd be concerned about it. And so I think the part that was, well, one of the parts that was very concerning to me was not knowing anything about this until, you know, after it's already almost done. And so that's something that I would bring to, you know, I don't know whether it's really your committee or a larger committee or whatever, but that's really problematic. And I think everybody here is a homeowner, no matter who you are, would understand, you know, concerns and wanting to be in on, you know, kind of the ground floor in terms of getting information and knowing what's happening. So that's all, that's my comment. Thank you.
We have Salem Derby, the consul of Derby here, he is the chairman of the ordinance. And I agree 100% with you. I think in some occasion, we have to notify people over 300 feet. I'm 100% with you. I just, I don't know if in the past it was part of any concern that tried to change the rules about that. But I guess it's something that we should work on it, because I agree 100% with you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Yeah, Mike Perouse.
Hi, Mike.
I live on Four Clap Street. And Patty had read up, we were emailing earlier today, and she basically read off my questions already. But, so I understand about odor. So when you get the propane to the facility, it's already gonna have that additive in it, so that you already know that it, the smell's gonna be part of that, that fuel, or is that something the company has to add?
Correct, it's already added in.
Before someone answered, can you please make all the statement, all the questions, so that way we can answer all of them at the same time?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
So, again, Patty listed some of these, so, but I'll repeat them. Did the city investigate company's history in the cities that they currently operate in? And what was the result? Next question, did the city investigate the company's financial health to make sure they are going to be viable and not build and collapse, leaving lots of stuff hanging around? And in both of those questions, it's not a, I'm not picking on the company, it's just basically, I think it would be important with this type of facility to understand the company's past and understand its viability going forward. Because we've seen other types of businesses come in, invest a lot, and if something changes, they do fail, and then, you know, that's just the way it is. The next question is, if the company decides to sell or is merged with another company, is the city required, and the fire department required, to go and review the license and make sure that the new company is gonna be following all the regulations and able to meet those regulations? And then my last question is, and this is from the planning board meeting. I wasn't quite sure how many grill-sized fuel tanks are gonna be on the property. And when people come and go, how are those stored? And what happens, I imagine you'll probably have some full ones, but what happens to the old ones, are those emptied so that there's no fuel stuck in them? And any safety risks there? Because one of the links I had sent for the planning board, there was a Blue Rhino fire down in Florida. And it wasn't the big tanks that was the issue, I don't think. I think it was the smaller tanks where they had failures with the workers. And so that's what caused the problem down in Florida. And then that resulted in, you know, the danger to the larger tanks. So I was just wondering how those would be managed so that they're not a risk to the larger tanks?
Dan and Jody?
Sure, so for the first question, just make sure you got the answer, actually, I think we doubled, was the odorant is added before it comes into town. So, yeah, the odorant will be added already. The second one was, the only thing that I've done was, I did speak with the fire prevention officer in Westfield. He's had no issues with the company over there at all. So that's the only thing that I have looked into. Up and beyond that, is kind of beyond my scope, is the fire department, as far as the regulations go. I've made sure that they follow all the fire code, that's kind of my responsibility and such. If they decide to sell, the land license always stays with the land, so the land license. If they decide to sell, the the land license always stays with the land, so the land license would 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 be transferred to the to the new owner, just like right now, the current land license is being transferred at what it is right now to the to the new owner. The new company would have to follow the same or the current, you know, guidelines as far as the fire code goes. You know, at that, at that time as the company that that would that it would have been there. So if they sell it to another propane company, they have to absolutely continue, you know, maintaining it and 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 following the fire code with that. So hopefully that helps with those questions and maybe I'll defer to to Jody or I don't think I can't see if the the owner's on about as as far as how many grill tanks will be on there.
Who want to cover this?
Okay, I'll I'll speak to that. So the the thousand gallon pump station is to fill 20 pounders for customers. It's just it's customers that might come in and want their 20 pounders filled for the weekend, et cetera. They, Mr. Hunter is not looking to refurbish and do get into the 20 pound business like Blue Rhino. Blue Rhino does thousands of of tanks and what they do is they bring in old ones and they recycle them. And they have thousands on site. He could have just a few at one time, someone might bring a couple in and someone fill them and then they leave with them. His intent is not to have a lot of 20 pounders. His intent is not to have a lot of tanks around. He wants to with the tanks he has, get them out in the field to customers.
Okay, so so basically it's just tanks that are used for a home use.
Mostly, I mean, there might be a couple of 20 pounders that that someone drops off in the morning at to the the lady in the office and she waits for the serviceman to come back in the afternoon to fill them. And then they are picked up later that day. But he's not going to have a large amount of 20 pounders. It's it's just a customer service that he wants to be able to provide to his his customers in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to, may I make another note about the land license? And and the land license each year has to be renewed, so there's there's contact if 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 land transfers, if a new company comes in, they have to stay stay current with the town. They have to stay up on on things. It Massachusetts has a system where where you're you're constantly every year. And these facilities also are inspected once a year at the state level too. So they're not built and and left, they're they're inspected every year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else for the public? I guess not, consul Derby? Any question that that you have?
First off, sorry I'm late. I was trying to get out in the woods between Zoom meetings and I broke my chain, so I had to walk for a while. I was up in Huntington with no service, so that's my bad. But yeah, I mean, it for me, it's, you know, it's about the the zoning on the location. It it seems like it's a relatively appropriate location. I know that we had some pretty large propane tanks adjacent to that property for a couple of years that were supplementing the gas line. And I this is a different a different type of project that I I imagine. But the primary focus of these tanks is to to fill like trucks that are going to go out and service people's homes for like larger propane tanks. And it and it's not for like the, you know, small commercial, but you are going to have that capacity.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. You know, I I guess I don't really have a lot of questions. And the planning board, have you guys already gone through the planning board process with the special permit?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I have.
Lindsay?
No, I just want to thank the residents for coming out and posing these questions and for fire department and Jody to be here to answer questions. I totally agree with you, Pat, about we should more neighbors needed to be let known about this project and 300 feet often makes sense, but a project like this that if there was something that went wrong, the ramifications would definitely go further than 300 feet. So so I think that's something we're going to keep in mind. I don't know at an ordinance level or just like you said, a common sense level when we evaluate like 300 feet is the minimum of who we should let know. And from there, we should look at the project and who it affects. So thank you for your comment.
I agree. I have a question for Jody, there when the planning board vote, they vote unanimous to approve this?
Yes, it was, as I believe.
Yes, it was.
I wish Jeff was here to answer that question.
But I guess that was there, so I see that.
I believe it was, yeah.
It was.
I believe it was.
So, yeah.
I have I have sometimes a couple of these a night, so I apologize, but I believe it was.
Yeah, anything else that Dan, Jody, or Jeff want to add before we close the comments from the public?
No, again, go ahead, Jody.
I was going to say, I'm happy to take take more questions if if prior to the next meeting, if if you want to email them to me and I can have responses ready. And, you know, to 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 put neighbors' minds at ease and to answer their questions. Sometimes it's easier to have the those those questions ahead of time so I can have really well thought out answers. And, you know, so I would be happy to entertain that and you know, try and try and put people's minds at ease.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, same same here, obviously. Mike, you have my email, I know we've been talking back and forth, emailing back and forth, so you know, it's just deconstantine@eshamptonma.gov, so please feel free to to email me. Again, just want to reassure with this, like Jody had mentioned, we will be doing training and it would be ongoing training also that we, you know, keep up on the current practices with response to the LP emergencies and such. And we will be working on pre-planning, working that with with business, you know, I can assure you that with them, once they, you know, as as they get to be online and and such, but yeah, I'm here, you know, a lot, so feel free to to email me and I'll try to, you know, answer the questions best I can or get you some answers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay.
Omar?
Yes.
This is my, again, my apologies for being late and I don't know if this had already been discussed, but I was was one of the things the planning board reviewed, a security plan? I'm just curious how hardened the the site is going to be as far as gates and cameras and the things of those nature. Just, you know, as far as, you know, I hate to go there, but you know, it's like I kind of have to think I have a background in emergency planning, so it could be a target and are you preparing for that?
I can take this one. Code requires that we have fencing. There are cameras that are being put in place. I think there's some now, but they're going to have more details, so it covers all of the site. And the lighting plan will take that security into consideration. But also, there is a a code requirement, not only a fire safety analysis like what I worked with with Dan, but there's also an operation and maintenance and there's a hazmat plan, hazmat security plan. And that plan is for the employees and for the facility to give hazmat awareness and it it basically covers that. And that plan is renewed renewed once a year and trained once a year to all employees. And any new employee that's hired has to go through the hazmat security plan for that facility within 90 days of being hired.
Jody, is any email that I can get from you so that we can some questions?
Dan has it, but it's
Okay, Dan can send it to me.
Okay.
They can send it to me, that's fine, thank you. Any other question for the counselors? No, okay, this is this is my plan. Because we moved the the public hearing to October 7th and Jeff Bag is not here. So and I I was expecting him to be here. And I want to give it the opportunity to the neighbors to ask any other question before October 7. I'm not going to take any vote tonight. I'm going to take a vote in our next meeting, then my plan is to have it October 6th at 6:00 PM if the counselors are available. So that way we can bring any other concerns. I I think we cover probably 99.9% of all the everybody's concerns tonight. But I just because just we move it to the the public hearing to the October 7th. I just want to give it opportunity to any other person to to participate in the discussion and be more open to the neighbors if if the counselors are okay with it. Good? Okay, so that's that's what we're going to do, we're going to move it, we're going to keep it in the agenda. If any of the public have any other questions, so feel free to email me that question to ashgomet@eshamptonma.gov or you can give me a call to 413-977-2676. Feel free to contact me with any question about this project and we'll follow it to forward it to Dan or Jody. So and for October 7th, 6th at 6:00 PM, we're going to have all the quick answer for those questions. Okay? So we are done with 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 that. The other thing that we have in the agenda is the review on street parking and the traffic rules and order. I still working with the neighbors and the emails because I want the majority of the neighbor to be participate in our next meeting, I mean, not the next meeting, then then the next meeting available for everybody, or at least for the majority of the neighbors. So I'm still working on it. Besides that, I don't have anything else. I can hear you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, consul Derby?
Hi.
Consul Orchard?
Hi.
And I vote yes, so have a great night.
All right.
See you October 6th at 6:00 PM.
I know, to my calendar.
As I'm not in the woods.